Good afternoon, councillors. I would like to open the meeting at 3.31pm and thank you for your attendance. Do we have anyone to go into closed? Councillor Ladbrokes.
Mayor, if you can just note that I'm online, please.
Sure, yeah, we also have councillor O'Neill attending online.
I'd like to move, in accordance with the provision of section 254j.
Sorry, mayor, I don't think the microphone's on.
Sorry, Cameron. In accordance with the provision of section 245j, four, I mean, 4j, 254j, brackets three, of the Local Government Regulation 2012, a local government may resolve to close the meeting to the public to discuss items that the councillors or members consider it necessary to close the meeting. Confidential, I'll discuss confidential items that the council or members consider it necessary to close the meeting.
Okay, and what items are we talking about there? C1 to...
C1, C2.
C10.
Just keep going through.
Just nine.
To C10, which is page 217.
Righto.
Do we do that or do we just go right to C35?
I think if we can just go in for the moment for what's needed and then we'll come out and do conflicts.
So C1 through to C10, enclosed. Okay, do we have a seconda? Councillor Burkitt, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak to it? We're going to go to the vote, all those in favour?
Yes.
Nine zero. Item C1, rating scenario A. Updated with capping. The council receiving note the information provided. No. Now, haven't we got a few different ones?
It's whether we all have to say yes or no to it, won't we?
No, but we've got C1. Then we've got C2. Does it all need to be dealt with in C1, CEO?
I think your motion is the right one, Mr Mayor, where we've just received a note, the information provided.
Okay.
There's nothing further that needs to happen.
So scenario, for instance, C or G, are they in C?
C2.
C2.
Two, yeah. Do we have a second for that? Councillor Burkitt, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak? We're going to go to the vote, all those in favour? All those against?
No, sorry, yes.
We'll do that again, all those in favour?
This is, sorry, this is of noting, the receiving and noting.
Noting, scenario A.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Okay, so that's nine zero. Okay, moving on to page 124. C2, further general rates modelling for 2021 slash 2022. I would like to move that scenario G be adopted. So do you have any wording there, CEO, as far as included in the draft budget or?
Yeah, so not adopting today, Mr Mayor.
Sorry, well, not adopted, but I move that scenario G be included in the draft budget documents.
The next draft of the budget documents.
Yeah, but that, yeah, the next draft of, so that'll be the one that we go to the meeting with.
Correct, yeah, with the special meeting next week.
Special meeting next Wednesday.
So what's that, bring it down to two now?
No, no, this will just be this one.
Just to con-
Please go ahead, councillor O'Neill.
That's the budget meeting next Wednesday, isn't it?
Correct, so this would be the one, if council vote for it, that goes in the documents.
Thank you.
Yeah, you however, you know, can vote for or against it. But, yeah, so do we have a second for scenario? Councillor McMullin, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak?
Yes, I'm opposed.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone wish to speak to the motion? I'll speak to the motion, I believe that in a Covid enduring epidemic, this is the best thing for the Maranoa and I believe that with the plans that, you know, can be included, that this is the best thing for the ratepayers of the Maranoa. Okay, councillor O'Neill, do you want to wish to speak against the motion?
No, I do not.
Okay, does anyone wish to speak? For or against? Okay, we're going to go to the vote, all those in favour? All those against?
Against.
Six, three, if I can call for a division. Okay, moving on to C3. Page 160. C3, rates modelling for 2021/22. I'd like to move that council note rating scenario F. Receive a note, rating scenario F. Do we have a seconda? Councillor McMullin, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak to it? Or against? We're going to go to the vote, all those in favour? All those against?
Against.
That's seven, two, if I can call for a division. Okay, moving on to C4. Page 178, C4, interest on overdue rates retabled. Do we have a mover? Councillor McMullin.
Mr Mayor, I'll move that council include an interest rate of 4% on overdue rates and charges in the next draft of the 2021/22 budget.
We have a seconda, councillor Ladbrokes, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak? We're going to go to the vote, all those in favour?
Yes.
Nine zero. C5, prompt payment discount, rates retabled. Do we have a mover? Councillor Burkitt.
I'd like to move that council recommend that the draft 2021/22 budget include a 5% discount on differential general rates if paid within the discount period of 30 days of the date of issue of the rate notice, provided that a) all of the aforementioned rates and charges be paid in 30 days of the date of issue of the rate notice; b) all other rates and charges appearing on the rate notice that are not subject to a discount are paid within 30 days after the date of issue of the rates notice, rate notice, sorry; and c) all other overdue rates and charges related to the ratable assessment are paid within 30 days of the date of issue of the rate notice.
We have a seconda, councillor Guthrie, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak? We're going to go to the vote, all those in favour? Nine zero.
Yes.
Sorry, I didn't wait for councillor O'Neill, but it is nine zero. Okay, moving on to C6. Page 191. Rural Fire Brigade Special Charge 2021/22. Do we have a mover? Councillor Taylor.
I'd like to move that the Rural Fire Brigade Special Charge is being included in the next draft of the ratings resolutions of the 2021/22 budget. AMB $74.58, Mungalala $74.58, Yulba $74.58 and Orange Hill $50.
Okay, do we have a seconda? Councillor Burkitt, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak? We're going to go to the vote, all those in favour?
Yes.
C7, page 200. Item C7, special rate state government precept. Do we have a mover? Councillor McMullin.
Mr Mayor, I'll move that the state government precept special rate of 0.00017 be included in the next draft of the 2021/22 budget.
And we have a seconda, councillor Hancock, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak? We'll go to the vote, all those in favour?
Yes.
Nine zero. C8, special rate pest management. Do we have a mover, councillor Hancock?
I move that the pest management special rate of 0.000123553 be included in the next draft of the rating resolutions for the 2021/22 budget.
Do we have a seconda? Councillor Ladbrokes, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak to it? We're going to go to the vote, all those in favour?
Yes.
Nine zero. C9, draft budget 2020, 2020, 2021 slash 2022 rationale for revenue policy, revenue statement and budget community document. I'd like to move that council include in the draft budget wording as... I'd like to move that the draft wording be included in the budget papers. Do we have a seconda? Councillor McMullin, any opposition?
Yes.
Does anyone wish to speak? I do believe that we're definitely in Covid times and I do believe that this is very important to be able to include this wording. Do we have councillor Hancock, would you like to speak against the motion?
Thanks.
Okay, does anyone else wish to speak? For, against, well then we're going to go to the vote, all those in favour? All those against?
Against.
Six, three, if I can call for a division. C10, draft debt borrowing policy 2021/22 retabled. Do we have a mover? Councillor Guthrie.
I'd like to move that council one, receive and note the draft debt borrowing policy 2021/22 and two, approve that the draft debt borrowing policy 2021/22 be included in the final draft of the 2021/22 budget papers.
Do we have a seconda? Councillor Edwards, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak? We're going to go to the vote, all those in favour?
Yes.
Nine zero. Okay. We had to do some conflicts first to go into closed again or?
Could I suggest, Mr Mayor, that we go into closed to talk about the materials and services item?
What item is that one, CEO?
Mayor, I don't think the microphone's on over there, where Julie is.
Sorry, councillor O'Neill and councillors. I've just suggested to the mayor that perhaps we go into closed to talk about the items pertaining to materials and services expenditure, which is C28 and there's some supplementary.
C28, okay. Is there supplementary numbers as well?
Sorry, the prefix that's showing there should be C rather than nine, that's what's causing.
Double that.
And then there was also some supplementary information that will be delivered as.
C28, did we say?
Yeah, we haven't got the papers.
We haven't got those papers yet.
Yeah, I have.
On the computer.
Yep.
I've got mine.
Yeah, you've just got yours. There's actually a handout that will go with it.
Oh, okay, so, but is it a C28?
It should be C, not nine, Mr Mayor.
So, do we have anyone to move to go into closed?
Cindy was asking the item, there wasn't a second.
497, which you made, have you got the new one?
Councillor Hancock.
Sorry, Mr Mayor, we might also cover the benchmarking one as well because it's related.
Okay, so councillor Hancock, do you want to move on C28 and C27 because they're related? Okay, did you want to read that out?
In accordance with provisions of section 254j through the Local Government Regulation 2012, a local government may resolve to close the meeting to the public to discuss confidential items that its councillors or members consider it necessary to close the meeting. Those items are C27, benchmarking 2014, 15 to 2019, 20, and C28, further information for the draft materials and service expenditure reduction 2021/22.
Do we have a seconda? Councillor Burkitt, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak? We're going to go to the vote, all those in favour?
Yes.
Nine zero. Okay, so C27, benchmarking 2014, 15 to 2019, 20. Okay, do we have a mover? Councillor Ladbrokes.
I'd like to move that council, the council note the report and the benchmarking table circulated at the meeting and via email as it is on A3.
Do we have a seconda? Councillor Guthrie, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak to it? Against or anything? We'll go to the vote, all those in favour?
Yes.
Nine zero. Item C28, further information for the draft materials and services expenditure reduction 2021/22. I'd like to move that one, council receive and note the information provided in the report and two, the council proceed with the materials and services expenditure reduction efficiency programme 21/22 to be included in the draft budget documents. Does that give enough direction, CEO?
Sorry, what percentage?
Twenty percent. So we need to put that in, proceed with the materials and services reduction efficiency programme 21/22 to be included in the draft budget documents at the rate of 20%. Beg your pardon?
Is it in the statement of comprehensive income?
Yeah, yeah.
So that pertains to our day-to-day service delivery?
Yeah.
Operations and maintenance.
Yeah, so it would be in reduction of materials and services of 20% in that for council to vote on, obviously next week in the special meeting for the budget.
Sorry, Kel, it's very relevant that we include, if it's the mayor's intention, that it pertain to the figure that's in the statement of comprehensive income? Because that is, as I mentioned, our day-to-day service delivery and the operations and maintenance. At the rate of 20%. The quantum.
So this is for materials, I need to put in there materials and services.
Yeah, Mr Mayor, it'd probably be helpful to include the quantum, what that 20% equates to.
Be 8.6.
So based on that draft value?
Yeah, yeah, I'll put that figure in, eight million 735, uh, 735,000 and $43.
Yeah, 8.735 million, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and $43.043.
Doesn't quite look right.
No, something's not right.
Something not right there.
There's a zero in front of the...
043.
Yeah, and this.
No, that, that's, that still doesn't make sense.
No decimal points. Just a comma after 043, in front of 043, Kel, not a, not a decimal.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I said million.
Well, that, that's what it's got.
The not both.
Is that correct?
Yeah, dollars.
We need to put for materials and services.
It's up, up at the top.
Oh, yeah, right. And also in there materials and services, yeah, that's in there, 20%.
Yeah, because that's probably a good point, Mr Mayor, that the policy will need to come at the same time because council needs to see what the impact of 8.75, 735 million is going to be on the day-to-day operations, day two of what the world looks like beyond that.
Well, we've said that there is no lack of reduction in services and if officers do have problems carrying that out, they come back to council and we deal with that in the quarterly reviews. So that's what we're saying, or that's what I'm saying. And I would put point three, that I, that the policy be developed on adoption of the budget to give guidance on the mechanism, the efficiency policy will be reported to council.
Sorry, Mayor, Sharon, your microphone's not on.
Sorry, councillor O'Neill.
You're right.
I was just suggesting whether that policy needs to be adopted at the time that the reduction is, is made to guide the organisation going forward.
Well, I, I think first we've got to see whether it's voted on and then it would be important, obviously the budgets would be reduced and then we'd have a mechanism of how staff can come back to council if they're not able to do that.
Won't the councillors need to know what the policy framework is around the efficiency programme to correspond with that budget?
No, I think the reduction in the budgets is clear and councillors can vote on that and then separate to that, we've got a policy of how we have our staff communicate back to the council table if they have any problems carrying that out. Righto, do we have a seconda for that motion?
We just need to clear something up there, that this pertains to the figure included in the statement of comprehensive income, which includes the, the budget for operations and maintenance.
So does that, does that give you enough direction that that's changing like we did in the last draft, the amount for this budget?
Point three, Kel, we just need to get rid of that first, that. So when we say will be developed on adoption?
Oh, sorry, at the next, the next council meeting? So what I'm saying is if next week the budgets adopted, the next council meeting will give clear direction how the staff can come back to council.
Will it be adopted and table for consideration at the next council meeting? Shadow a decision? Policy to be developed and just take out the word adopted? Table for consideration at the next council meeting to give guidance?
Do we need to say after the budget meeting? Because it would be the next council meeting anyway. Actually, it's the same day, yeah. So that's handy.
To give guidance, what's the mechanism, the efficiency policy will be, what does that mean?
Which one, point two?
No, no, three, the second part of three.
Policy being developed and table for consideration at the next council meeting to give guidance on the mechanism. Well, you know, if there's any struggles with being able to deliver the efficiency policy, it would come back, so I'm just wondering whether it should actually say if, after the, after the budget, after budget day? Because that's when this will either get supported or not, if this gets up. Do you need more direction than that?
So if they can't find that 8.7 million?
Well, it's project by project and obviously we would be...
No, so that, that's why that particular point two is very relevant. This is coming out of operations and maintenance, it's not coming out of projects.
Okay, well, materials and services.
So this is the day-to-day how we deliver services across the region.
But the materials and services, when we got it, we saw that the projects were changed. So is, is that saying that or do I need to change the wording? Like, for instance, telephone, the amount.
That's not a project, though.
No, but it's an amount that we budget for each year, so.
That's part of our operational cost.
Right, yeah. And obviously our materials are connected to our capital costs in a way because we supply materials to those.
No, that's not the materials, the materials and services in the statement of comprehensive income is what we use for our operations, our data... Is what we use for our operations, our day-to-day operations and our maintenance, so. If you've, for instance, if there's a water main break and the guys go out and repair the leak. That this is what they need to be able to do that work. So as in going out, doing the job. Of fixing that water main is whatever parts, materials, et cetera, that they need. To be able to do that job. That's what it is, it's not a project.
No, but materials and services have the actual components in, in renewal or capital projects. Well.
It doesn't, not those materials and services.
In the statement of comprehensive income.
Right, so where are those other materials? Because we only had costs for staff, materials and services, depreciation.
Yeah, that's the operating costs.
So are they sitting in depreciation, are they?
No.
Capital.
In capital, yeah. So do we need to make mention to capital projects or, uh, give clear direction? Like, basically what was being tabled before, where we see a reduction at the high level and then it goes down to the individual items?
It, it depends what, what outcome you're seeking here. Is, is this seeking to get a better surplus?
Uh, no, it's, it's seeking to look at each individual item in that list that has been supplied to us. And reducing those amounts by twenty percent. And if the staff, uh, have an issue with that, they bring it back to council. Meaning they can't do it and then council will look at it.
So that list was just on operating materials and services, didn't include capital projects?
But when you look at materials and services, there's only staff wages, materials and services and then depreciation in the whole council, so.
Or operational, so over here in the cash flow statement. Payments for property, plant and equipment is where we show our capital purchases, so it's not split up into payroll, materials and services.
Oh, yeah.
Et cetera, so it's in a different.
So if the intent is to reduce, um, the individual items that we're purchasing in materials and services. Uh, through efficiency, reduce what that's costing, what's the best direction in the motion to be able to do that? To give, um, the direction to offices to put it into the budget?
So it. So it sounds like at this time you're just after operations and maintenance, is that right?
Uh, well, the materials and services, you know, that's the one that we're looking at the twenty percent reduction in. But we're breaking it down to the individual items, you know, the power bill, the, all of those things. And of the, and the intent is to reduce those, so, you know, instead of this amount, there is now this amount. And each project is like that.
Yeah, so basically reducing, what you want to do is reduce the operating budget.
Yeah, correct. But on an individual one, so when we get it next week, that would actually, you know, change from, say, one hundred. Um, and reduce by twenty percent in each, each individual one. And then we would have a mechanism to come back to council if, uh, it's unable to be done.
So, Mr. Mayor, could I suggest that if you're going to do this, just do it at function level? And let the officers try, the employees try and work out. How it is that they're going to continue to provide the service with this. If, if, like, we literally have hun. How many, Cindy, you deal with them, all, numbers of work orders?
Oh, I get it, thousands.
Thousands. So if, if, if council is seeking to try and control at, at. Across those thousands, we will lit- council is wanting to have less things come to the table. Um, and allow staff to get on and do the job that they're employed to do. If, if you're seeking to control it down to those thousands and thousands of work orders, you are literally going to grind the organisation to a halt. So i- i- if you want to set a target, please do it at the function, we've got thirty-eight functions. That, that council delivers across the region, put it to the function level. And then leave it to the function leaders to try and work out how they can deliver what they're meant to deliver. Um, or else you will literally, we'll be back here, um, and our meetings will be. Triple, quadruple the time if we're going to have to come back every time one of those work orders. Because you need to remember councillors that the, the draft budget is the best estimate. That we have to be able to deliver those services. What this is doing is saying, well. We're going to set aside the best estimate and we're going to reduce it by eight point seven three five million, which is a lot of money. For a council our size. So, um, that, it is going to create operational issues. That will be further mag- magnified if you want to then control it by work order. We, we will be back.
Yeah, well, we'll have that debate in a minute.
So that's what I'm suggesting is that, that it be restricted to a function level. And that, that if the, if the, um, if the teams are going to think that they'll go over at that function level. Then come and talk to council, but not at the mi- minutia of the, what they need. To manage their daily work.
Okay, so if, if we do this at function level to begin with, then can the policy actually say that? They would go away with their budgets and change their budgets as far as what, um, is their best estimate? So the staff are working for this smaller amount, um, and we're, we're challenging everything that we do. How we can be more efficient, how we can, uh, there'll be suggestions obviously come back from staff, so can that still be done? Through the policy?
Just thinking on my feet here, Mr. Mayor, so.
Just approximately.
Yeah, I.
So for instance, it could be done at function level and then we make the policy that we want you to look at all your budgets instead of saying.
There, there, there's going to have to be a reworking, i- if this goes through, there's going to have to be a reworking of budgets. And the people who deal with the work on a day-to-day basis and they're on the front line and have. And have the demands for their services, please give them the opportunity to have a say as to how this is done because. Um, this is going to affect how they manage their day-to-day work. So they, they need to have some opportunity to look at how, and make some suggestions to that budget. Um, and watch, and then perhaps come back to council and say, well, are you prepared? To reduce these services because we can't, we, we've gone, i- it might be. In one particular area, they've gone as far as they can and, um, so council might have to accept a lower. Level of service, but only council can decide that, not the employee on the front line. It's council that decides the budget and the resources that go with that. So, um, if. I think probably it's better if the employees then come to council, um, we as a team and say, well, this is how. The budget might be able to be worked, yes or no, or part thereof. Make sure that council is happy with those service lev- those revised service levels. Um, and then it's then council that decides, yep, that we're comfortable with that.
Yeah, it's, yeah, see, it's not about revised service levels, like thi- this, 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 um. Efficiency programme is not reduction in scope, it's actually about being more efficient, so. My question is, I don't mind doing it by function, but then will we still have? If, if this is moved, will we still have the ability to say, go and do your internal, uh, budgets and change them? As a way that every day everyone is looking at that without grinding everyone to a halt? Um, can that still be done through a policy?
Oh, well. If council adopts it at the function level, then we then need to take that away and then rework the budgets accordingly.
Also, when we're doing this policy on how the communication from the staff come back, back to council, which would be the next, the same day. Um, can, can we still say that, okay, we want to change those budgets? And, but we want to hear from you when you can't. So like, a lot of it is planning, obviously you've got, you know, capital. I mean, you've got maintenance that just happens every day, so do we still have the flexibility to do that as councillors? To change that, like, we did it as function for the budget.
Yeah.
But then we come back and we say, we'd like you to change your budget amounts for, you know, each things. Can, do, can we still do that through policy?
As in, um, no, no, you would do it by a budget. It depends, see, i- i- if, if you take the budget off at materials and services at the very highest level. It won't trigger a budget amendment unless we come back to you and say that we can't achieve eight point seven three five million. But that, that's a separate conversation. But in terms of sharing the workload or the impact of that. Then it's fairest to do it by function, um, rework the budgets. And if there are any concerns, that they be separately brought back to council by way of a report.
But councillors could say, so what we want by function is you to change all your amounts. And then come and talk to us if you can't fulfil.
Yes, yeah.
So we could still do that through policy if we move this.
Well, thi- this is really setting your target budgets and then, uh, it's up to us as officers to go away and work within that. The best way that we can and if we can't, come back and talk to council.
But however, we'd probably be doing this next, this right after the budget.
Yeah, so the, the policy will need to be flexible enough that.
Yeah, but if council, if council wanted to, they could come and say, change, now you've done a part function. But now we'd like you to change your notion of all your budgets individually.
Yeah, and, and it would be fairest as well to have a look at what that does from a local area perspective. Because we can dis- dissect it from function and local areas. So, um, and that will give the, the target for the directors of what they're working towards, that they need to reduce for their areas.
And that, and that's all a bit up in the air at the moment until, yeah, that's all restructured, isn't it?
Yeah.
Righto, so, yes.
Uh, just on the statement of comprehensive income, um, so that twenty percent of. Uh, eight point seven three five, you know, divided by twenty percent.
Oh, sorry, no, that, that, and that's probably worth clarifying, Kel, that the twen- at the rate of twenty percent. It, it's twenty percent of. It's, it's actually a reduction of eight point seven three five million.
No, the savings is twenty percent, but.
At the, at the rate of twenty percent, which is the equivalent of a reduction of.
Removed off the top of materials and services.
Reduction of.
We will set the policy straight after the budget basis.
That's okay, I'm just, I'm just equating, take the eight point seven three five million divided by twenty percent, what do you get?
No, no, the, the eight point seven is.
I'm just saying, that's fifty million.
Four, forty-three or something.
It is, but, but that fifty million is not in the statement of comprehensive income.
Yes, it is, yeah, the forty-three million is.
So the materials and services on an operational basis. Is, is in the statement of comprehensive income is forty, uh, that's fifty million, is it?
Five is twenty percent, so you can work backwards from that, which is forty-three.
Because the idea with this, if it's passed, is that each, as we go through the year, we have many work orders. And I, and obviously we're not talking about emergencies, um, but even those that we'd be looking for efficiencies. But it's actually about saying, oh, the amount for the best estimate is changed as far as council and we're striving for a new figure now. So as long as we can do that in policy, um, and so we don't go on the organisation.
To a halt.
To a halt. This, this delivers that, which obviously changes our position, um, and we can do that through policy.
Yeah, so it, it doesn't change the actual position, it changes a, a budget. Position that, that saving is yet to be realised, so until it's realised, we don't have that.
Well, it's, well, it's on, yeah, but in the figures it is there, um, but we know that we will have it there in case we need it. Okay, do we have a s- uh, second for this motion? Councillor Edwards, any opposition?
Sorry, Kel, we didn't fix, we, sorry councillor O'Neill, we didn't fix point three because it still doesn't make sense.
Councillor O'Neill?
I was just gonna ask, I, I can't see the screen, I don't know what needs to be done there, but. I can see you all, but I can't see what you're looking at.
Um, to, the, next council meeting to give guidance on the process. If there are concerns that some or all of the savings may not be able to be achieved. Because you're, you're not thinking that we come back unless there's a problem.
No, no, but I mean, the first meeting, we set the budget of how, how the, oh, the policy, I should say. Of how, um, you know, staff come back and talk to us. If, for instance, it's a fixed cost and they can't do anything about it, there needs to be a mechanism, there needs to be a mechanism. Uh, and in that first, so it's not actually officers come back to us, it's actually also council deciding as well. Obviously, we get the feedback from officers, um, but one of the. Yeah, one of the big things, so that point three, um. A policy to be developed and table for consideration next council meeting, um.
Councillor O'Neill, deputy CEO is just, um, getting an image for you so you can see what's on the screen.
Thank you.
So I'd also, yeah, the policy be developed and table for consideration at the next council meeting to give guidance on the process. If there are concerns that some or all of the saves may not be achieved and then receive councillors. Well, yeah, do not, point four, um, council to give direction. On how individual, um, amounts or. You know, what do, what do they call it, like, in your materials and services when we've got the breakdown, what do we call those things? Right through to estimates, no? Cost types, individual amounts or, or individual cost types.
Expenditure, expenditure type?
No, individual cost types slash expenditure types. Expenditure types, um. And how the twenty percent can be applied to. These and the mechanism for staff to come back to council.
But that's, sorry, that's what three is.
Yeah, but it's, it's, what I'm saying is that you will come back with your recommendations, but we will also. The council is going to give feedback because, you know, council may be driving this, so council needs to give feedback. Here, your issues, but also say, this is actually down to each individual cost type, not. You've got so much money per department. We're going to do it like that in the budget if this is approved, but then we need to work out the maybe group.
Isn't that part of the policy that you want to develop? Like, you're sort of part of, you're actually developing policy here on the fly.
Fly, yeah, I, I don't, I think it's premature to have the full, um, or, or.
Well, I, I think it's very important since we're doing it at council to give direction on our individual cost to expenditures, our twenty percent can be.
When, when the, when the employee comes back to the council table. They will say, w- we've got an issue, th- this is how we propose to. Deal with that issue, is council comfortable with that? And then, just like any other recommendation, council can either accept. Reject or amend and resolve something different, like, it's, it's not a, a different process.
But point four is about saying how we want, like, the pe- staff of Mariner Region Council to see these. To see these cost types, not, I've got the same cost type, but I've gotta find this much saving as a department. So, we can do it like that in the budget, but this is a process. That's why I'm happy to have point three in, which is hearing from. Um, you CEO and your staff, but also four is how council, um, who might be driving this. Want to see this policy implemented, so, and, and sort of like it's clear that both of those. Okay, councillor Edwards, did you wanna take another photo, cause that's changed? You can email, could you email that to councillor O'Neill? Oh, uh, councillor Edwards, are you happy with that change?
Read the last one again, point four?
Three and four. So basically, if this is, if the budget is passed at the next council meeting, which is the same day. We would give direction on how this can be, the communication back to council, if they cannot. Deliver within these bounds, as well as, um, we're gonna hear from, point three is hearing from the staff as well.
Sorry, Mr Mayor, can, uh, it's, it's just really confusing, that point four, because. Come next week, we're not going to be sitting here saying. We can't save this amount on the telephone bill, how do you want us to deal with that next week, aren't we?
No, but what, what we need to do is, is get to the knitting ground of policy, so the staff have. Um, assurance, there is a, a program of coming back once they've looked into it. So we nearly need to get that policy once our budget.
We will certainly come back to you.
We don't, because you, you have talked about reduction in services, which is not on, in my opinion, not on the table, so. What we really need to do is put some bones around what we've decided to do, so I do believe we need it on the agenda if, if it's. Passed and we need to hear from yourself, but also throw what the council's views are, how we want this implemented.
So what? I thought the understanding was i- if, if they can't, i- if each person can't meet their target, that they come back to a quarterly review. And talk to council about that, so.
Definitely will, but for instance, if, if a, if a by function, they're saying we've gotta save, you know, five hundred thousand dollars in this function. That's the wrong way to think about it. It's actually, we've got all these items, we've gotta save a bit here and a bit there and a bit there out of all of them. So we're looking at them individually, otherwise it's very high level, so that's what. The idea of putting a policy around it and explain what council wants as a basic.
Okay, how about this, that, that, this target goes away, the function leaders, it won't be by next week. Because we've gotta finalize the budget for next week, the function leaders come back with a proposal about what their. Reduced budget would look like, and, and we do that on a progressive basis to each council meeting, so we don't have thirty eight to the next meeting. But we have a progressive, um, coming, what, how they might be able to reduce their budget. And, and see whether council is comfortable with that.
So, this is a high level statement and policy about what the twenty percent is about. To explain to the staff, because, you know, like, people can have the misapprehension that. We're talking about reducing services or whatever, so, there's gotta be some direction from council, and we can't do it in a budget meeting, so I think we should do it after. I don't mean that there's a lot of work for staff to do, this is, it's a bit like, please explain what you really mean. It's that that we would give to the staff, so they go, oh, oh, so it's not that, it's actually this. So, yeah. Okay, so that's basically, um, if you wanna take three out, we can, but four is about putting some bones around. If it did go through in the budget, what we expect. Did you want three in there, um, CEO or? Cause I don't want you going, cause there's a huge amount of work to get the budget done, I don't want you doing any extra work.
I, I think th- three will be helpful to our teams.
Right, okay.
Who, who may be very apprehensive about this particular resolution, uh. At least it gives some hope that we have an opportunity to bring concerns back.
Well, point four is gonna do that, we're gonna have a whole mechanism, and I think four will relay more fees, fears than three. We can, because you'll actually get, oh, that's what it's about.
Yeah, four, four sounds a little like council will be telling the people who deal with this on a day-to-day basis, how they. Need to do their job, so.
Just about efficiency and how what we're, we're, we're putting a challenge in. Okay, I know we need to keep moving, councillor Edwards?
This, uh, number, uh, item four.
Yes.
Does council give direction on how individual cost types, four slash expenditure types, and then basically, uh, doesn't sort of make a great deal of sense, so. Council give direction or identify or something, you know, because it, it's basically like a dead end street, that first part.
How would you cha- how would you change it?
Well, I say identify individual cost types, expenditure types, and how the twenty percent can be applied to these.
Righto, yeah, I'm happy with that.
Along those lines, because it doesn't really make.
Righto, I'm happy with that.
Or something, yeah.
That sounds much better, councillor Edwards, thank you.
Something like that. Is that, is that what you're trying to, I, I don't know, but. Yeah, no, that's it, so it's, it's, it's definitely not at high level, it's at the, each individual item. That the challenge goes out. Yeah, um.
It, it's not perfect, but it's better.
And can I just ask another question? I just keep going back to this statement of comprehensive income, what, can you just advise us what it is?
It's the old P and L statement, councillor Edwards, you, yeah, you might know it as operating statement or P and L.
But there's no capital expenditure in there, so this is just operational expenditure.
Correct, a day-to-day service delivery.
I, yeah. Materials and services are also in, in capital, aren't they? Capital, like the materials and services are also.
But not in the statement of comprehensive income.
No, it shouldn't be a statement of income and expenditure, and not comprehensive income?
It should be a statement of cash flows rather than.
Well, not comprehensive income, it should be a statement of income and expenditure.
Well, it depends what council's intent is.
Well, I, I think it should be.
Well, it's income and expenditure as far as I, far as I know, not comprehensive income, I don't think that's.
Righto, I'm happy to change that.
Sort of trying to achieve, um.
So that would mean that it'd be capital projects too?
I'm talking about capital projects, you know, it's gotta be.
Like the, the materials and service part of the capital project, not the wage component, but the materials and service part of it.
The difficulty that you're going to have, um, whether it's in the operating or capital. Is how, a- as a rule. You're going to have the same amount of people and you're going to give them less materials and services to work with.
No, uh, but it could be, for instance, there's less, less hire or plant needed on that job. Because we do it more efficiently with another job, this is the challenge, that they come back and say, oh, we saved this amount. We may not have got it all, but we saved that, come back to council, there's a mechanism which is part of the policy, and we deal with that. So, this is not that we can solve, we, I know that people in Mariner Region Council do have the answers, so. So, councillor Edwards, you think we should change it to, um.
Statement of income and expenditure, because I'm looking at the statement of income and expenditure right now.
We don't have one of those.
Well, it's gotta be something with the forty three million in it.
That is, that is the forty three million.
Forty three, six, seven, five, two, one, six?
That, that is in the statement of comprehensive income.
Okay. And that includes capital expenditure.
No, it doesn't. That's, this is the operating and maintenance budget. That this is what ticks council, like, this is what, how we tick over day-to-day, providing the services that we provide to the community. Um, how we operate, how we maintain the roads. This is where, this is money, eight point seven fo- three, eight point seven three five million. Ta- coming off the top of that, so when we talk about water and sewage maintenance, road maintenance, um. E- e- every other operation.
So, can I ask?
Maintenance of buildings.
There, we just need.
I think what councillor Edwards is talking about is in the budget, it's called a statement.
But it's still operating.
Oh, yes, yeah, it's still operating.
It's the name of it.
It, it's, it's in the budget module, is it? But that's not what it's called, um.
So the materials and services, there is no other part of materials that goes into capital projects, is there?
Yeah, so this value here.
Yes.
In our cash flow statement, so that value is total value of capital works, which is made up of our payroll. Plant, materials.
Wages.
Yeah, the payroll, yeah.
Yeah, payroll.
So that figure there is made up of all those, to deliver those projects.
Yeah. Deliver capital, capital.
Capital projects.
Material and services is a component of that.
No.
Not, not, not that forty three million.
Not this forty three.
No, no, but what I mean is, cause when you break it down to, you've got staff costs, your payroll, then you've got material. And then, then you've got depreciation, and there's not much else left after that.
Finance costs.
Finance costs, yeah, which, you know, so there's not much left.
No.
So where do you get the materials and services for capital projects?
Yeah, what, what statement is that in?
Um, cash flow statement, so there's property, plant and equipment, which is our capital cost. And it's not broken down into employee costs, materials and services. Yeah, it's not broken down in our budget statements.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. But there is no, so the materials and services funds capital costs. It funds like the floodworks and stuff, what, what I mean is the material component of it does.
The, the capital total.
Yes.
Each individual, um, capital works, either there is total materials and services implied.
Yep.
Or a component of ma- uh, materials and services, plant and salaries and wages, yeah.
Yeah.
So each of those projects have those components.
Yeah.
Each project's different.
Yeah.
So if we wanted to, to include a challenge with capital projects, can we do that? We're obviously doing it with materials and services, can we do that through the policy? To, to, to do that after we adopt the budget? Just for the, just for the materials and services part.
Possibly, like I have a target budget for each project. But only if, if that project, project includes materials and services.
Yeah, if it includes materials and services. Whereas don't build a lot of roads, new, like, you know, capital now, you gotta grapple with it.
I'll just clarify something for councillor Edwards, we, we've just worked out where the disconnect is happening here. The, the. The financial statements that are done at the end of each year in accordance with the accounting standards, that's the statement of comprehensive income. And so when you look at our annual report, when you open up that document, the old P and L. It is, is the statement of comprehensive income, so that, that, that's where you get your operating result, and Mr Mayor, you talk about a surplus. And getting a responsible surplus, that's, that's statement. The section of the legislation that talks about the budget refers to income and expenditure. But, but it's, is it safe to say it's one in?
One in.
One, it's one in the same thing, it's just got a different. Yeah.
Cause you're putting comprehensive income in this, uh, you know, it's going into this motion, resolution, but, yeah.
Yeah, so if, if we put in brackets just for consistency, it's, it's. Um, so I apologize for that confusion, it's income and expenditure, but it's not. To- it's not total expenditure, it's only operating.
Well, this is, this is the point I wanna make, is if you had a capital, uh, a capital item, for example, you know. Fixing up something for ten thousand dollars, and you wanted to save twenty percent on that capital item, like building a shed or something. Where does that go into this?
It doesn't go to the statement.
That's what I, that's what I wanna know.
It affects your cash.
So tighten this up, you'd need to say it has to apply to some other statement, like the statement of cash flow, cause that catches. The capital side of things as well as the materials and services, correct? You, you know, um, so on that shed I was talking about, how would you capture twenty percent saving on a shed? Within this, um.
Or it could be the materials and services.
Oh, materials and services to do with the shed.
Oh, to do with the shed, sorry.
It is another option, if, if council has a, has in its mind that you wanna save eight point seven three five. Off the budget, why don't you do it per, again, it's not my recommendation, I'm just trying to. Understand where council wants to come from, why don't you say twenty percent per function? And then that way, you are giving the employees, our team members. The opportunity to work out how best they can save that, so you're basically sending, s- setting them a dollar target. And then they work out how they can save that, now they might be able to, the team might say, well, we can do this particular job. Differently and we'll save this money, someone else might be able to say, well, we can do it in our operating area, but we can't do it in our capital. This way, you're giving our teams some sort of flexibility, you're setting them a target, that becomes an overall corporate performance measure. But you're not sort of saying where it needs to come from, it's allowing some flexibility. So if we say that we wanna say, that the council wants to save eight point seven three five million. Uh, it'll be in proportion to their, their function, so we won't expect eight million from a really tiny function. Um, it'll be in proportion of what their, their budget spend is, and then it's up to them as to work out how they can. Find that money.
Probably more opportunity to be achievable to, I think, Julie, like, three weeks ago when we said.
Come up, Rob.
We were talking about this about three weeks ago, we were talking about this and all the examples that council gave, from our water and sewage.
Rob.
That's, um, that's, uh, that's sort of the examples you were giving, I said, well, that's their capital, they're the things we should be looking at. Um, we, we talked about this, that's what I was trying to get a few weeks ago, I sat down, all the examples you were giving me wasn't. Materials and services to do with, uh, operating expenses, that were capital stuff, all the examples we gave in here were, and I kept saying, well, yeah, there is opportunity, that, that's where we should be looking. If you go that way, it does open it up, you know, to try and still achieve that, 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 that target.
Target dollar, amen.
Capital land operating, certainly more opportunity to achieve that figure, cause you're not just restricting it to operating. Cause that's really difficult, the operating one, as I always said, but you opened up your capital as well, geez, you give us a bit more flexibility to try and find those savings. Because all the ones you, you had concerns about in this room a few weeks ago, they were all capital, they weren't.
I personally believe there's still savings, uh.
I think it's, I say it was in both.
Yeah, set, set the dollar target then, which is. An eight point seven three five million ta- dollar saving is what council is after, and let. Our teams and the leadership team work out how to do that.
Anyway, it's not my motion, but I'm just saying, it's, uh, you know, like, I'm happy with that, but I just, just wanna clarify the fact that it's all in there. That's all, uh, you know, including capital.
Yeah, no, I think it needs to be, you know, proportionate in capital, but what I'm saying is, this is about changing every budget. There's a challenge, so if I'm looking after the power building council, I've got a challenge to reduce it by that, if I'm looking after capital. I've got a challenge.
Like, some people don't have capital, Mr Mayor, they only have operating, so that's where it's.
What I mean is, and I, I hear what the deputy CEO said. So this is a fixed target that is actually reduced, and I don't mind which one it's in. But it's a reduced money thing, and we will have a process to come back to council if we can't do it, right? But it's real and it's a reduction in the budget, so, so it's gotta be both, so everyone, it's almost like. We had, um, everything shrunk overnight, it's now eighty percent of what it used to be, now we've got the challenge, can we make it fit? And if we can't, we have a process to come back to council, so, uh, to deputy CEO. So what, what incorporates both, what do we, what do we put in the motion?
It's per function.
Per function, and it will be a physical amount reduced each function in the budget, correct?
Yeah, we can.
And that'll capture both.
That'll capture both, yeah, if, if you say you want to. That'll capture both. Yeah, if if you say you want an expenditure reduction of. Twenty percent per function, that will. Ca- basically all types of expenditure.
Through you, Mr Mayor, Madam CEO, so it's what, uh, deputy, uh, deputy CEO, I'll get your name right. Um, so if it's encompassed by each group, and say they they work out they can save this job by twenty percent. And it 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 will include, um, labour in in that way too, well, that that still covers that, doesn't it?
Yeah, what would be better is council's worked out the dollar amount now. So why don't we just apportion that dollar amount by function? So that everyone's trying to save in proportion to the size of their budget. So if they've got a little budget, they're not being asked to save this.
So the gravel is an example, you can't skimp the gravel, but you might find a better way to lay the gravel.
To cart the gravel?
So.
Yeah.
That that encompasses everything, doesn't it?
Yeah, so tw- the ca- the council looks for an efficiency um target of twenty percent. Equivalent to eight point seven three five million across council, and that be, this be apportioned by function. Uh, the the target be apportioned by function. Um, and then that way everyone's got their share, and it's ea- it's.
But it would it would be, and the physical budgets have been reduced, so.
And then they, each of the function leaders would then need to go away and work out how they do that.
After we we give some direction, if it's passed next week, that we actually say, this is what we expect, because they could be thinking the worst. Um, so is it income and it it's uh, not income, but it's.
Just call it expenditure.
Expenditure reduction of twenty percent.
So, uh, and maybe another example there, we talked about like quarries before, it may be very hard with a um. Production aggregate where it's, yeah, you get, you're going to tender and you get five quotes, but they, they're still the same as what they've been in previous years' years, but that's my operating, but. You know, we have, we might have a capital project out there, and I have got one where with the other stakeholders, we've had a discussion about how we're going to do a road. And they've given some really good feedback and a good opportunity there to probably bring that in under budget by twenty percent. So I can try and get some savings in other areas as well, so.
Or or it could be, we, like, the sta- staff come back and say, if we change our plan, we can reduce. Um, our expenditure instead of going to tender, and we can do it another way, but we may need some investment. And then we look at it and go, well, in the long run, we've reduced our expenditure by changing our plan. So there's all things that they have to be thinking about.
That's right, yeah, so it may not be the operating, it could be a bit part operating, it could be part capital, but overall, when you look at quarry. You know, we've achieved a fifteen, eighty, and a twenty, twenty two percent reduction, so it's not just limiting to the operating, it's.
Yeah, so that um efficiency target of twenty percent is really to determine what that eight point. It it's the eight point seven three five million um expenditure reduction target. The coun- council set an expenditure reduction target of eight point seven three five million. And that the target savings be apportioned by function.
So it's like twenty percent off each function.
Well, i- you you've worked out twenty percent across the council, you've worked out that that's.
What I mean, twenty percent, you might have a small function budget, so it'll be a small amount.
Yeah. So, yeah, so I set an expenditure reduction target. Of. Eight point seven three five million. Uh, and that the target. Savings. Be allocated. In proportion to. Uh, each function budget.
But can we have a, like, ju- just suggesting that, so if you went back to say a specific.
Each function's e- um expenditure budget.
Like Legals, for example, how would that apply? So, or or any expense for that matter, it doesn't have to be whatever it is, but whatever it is. You know. Would be, uh, you know, feed or fodder or something, I I don't know, but. How would that apply to the function situation there, if you're if you're going to talk about a specific expenditure item in 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 its entirety?
Yeah, so so that particular uh function might look at it and say, there is no way that we can reduce this particular. Type of expenditure, but there might be some ways that we can reduce this other. Or or a little bit from each of these other areas, and then that's how they will come to council with that proposal.
But also, if this is passed, um, next, after the budget. We would keep a clear statement through council vote on it, what this is about and what they're to expect. And then we would hear from the CEO when they have issues, but understanding what we're actually wanting to do.
Okay.
So that is, um, okay, so is the second happy with that? So just to clarify, when we when we get the budget documents, the expenditure rule will be reduced over the council by twenty percent.
By that eight point seven three five, thr- three seven five million.
And it will just be by function, but then we'll come back with our, like, statement, because there's no detail in that. About what what the staff, there's a mechanism so they don't feel like they're hanging out on a limb because of what council's done. So we would put the bones around it, and of course, from an operational point of view, CEO, you would come back with your issues as well. So we could hear about that.
And it's a target too, which is, it's not like it's.
Well, it's it it's said that we reduce the thing, but we have a mechanism if you can't do it. Righto, so we've got to do this motion, so. I'm going to read it.
Sorry, Mr Mayor, um, Claire's just mentioned another point that's helpful to council, yeah.
Um, Mr Mayor, the eight point seven.
Yes.
Now that we are going to apply that to the total expenditure budget, which could be capital and operating. Then that eight point seven may not be applied to the statement of income and expenditure. Because it's a cash, not just an expense. So you're saving eight point seven million cash potentially, but that doesn't mean the eight point seven. Will improve your operating result, because some of that eight point seven is is capital expenditure. Which is a cash flow item.
So what will the difference be there?
Well, as we go through the function, that's when we probably identify, okay, what portion of. Uh, what what is a portion of operating and what is a portion of capital saving?
So it, between now and next week, uh, what I would suggest is that we have a very quick chat with all of the function leaders. And just say, o- on a first pass, what what do you think your percentage would be? Is it this, this, you know, is it sixty, forty, is it fifty, fifty between operating and capital? Uh, someone, some areas, as I said, don't have any capital, so it's going to be all of their operating. But we need to know that that approximate split to be able to do the financial statements, as as Claire said. The budgeted financial statements, because some of it will appear in the.
Cash flow?
Cash flow, and some of it will appear in the other statement.
Um, but the expenditure of council will reduce by twenty percent.
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, the budget, not not the actual, we we don't know what the actual be, but but the.
In our budget.
The budgeted.
Budget figure, because it does change through quarterly reviews, we know that.
Yeah, the bottom line.
The bottom line of our budget will be twenty percent reduced. And obviously, it won't be all in that operating uh surplus, because some of it is capital.
Yeah.
Correct, yes.
Are you, is the second happy with that? Uh, yes. And definitely we can come back and give the direction to the staff of the policy if it is adopted. I'm going to read this, council receiver note the information provided in the report. Two, council set the expenditure reduction target of eight million seven hundred and thirty five thousand and forty three dollars. And the targeted, the target savings be al- allocated in proportion to each function expenditure budget.
Each each function's apostrophe, yes.
Each each function's expenditure budget. Um, I probably, um, probably clarify that that is what that twenty percent is. So we haven't actually said that, we said it down the bottom, but um, it is twenty percent. So can we put twenty percent in there, please?
Yeah, it it's going to confuse it, Mr Mayor, if, because that eight point seven is of materials and services, which is in the operating. So it it's far bit cleaner, if if council's intent is operations and capital. Then we just need to talk in dollar terms.
Righto. Two, council set the expenditure reduction target of eight million seven hundred and thirty five thousand and four. And forty three dollars, and the target savings be allocated in proportion to each function expenditure budget. Three, the policy de- developed in table for consideration at a future council meeting. To give guidance on the process if there are concerns that some or all of the savings may not be able to be achieved. Four, council identify individual, um, well, that's probably changed a bit, so, uh, individual. Um.
Could could you say that council provide the opportunity for function leaders to identify? How best to achieve the target?
No, no, this is just about council providing, this would be next week if it is adopted after the budget council. Identify, um. And we might take, uh.
Opportunities?
Opportunities. And examples. Of how. The efficiency. Um, challenge for the organisation. Uh, organisation. Can be achieved. With a general mechanism of how staff can, um, come back. If, come back to council if, if, um. Come back to council if, um. If unachievable.
That's what point three is miss- saying, Mr.
Yeah, no, but we, I want to, what I'm saying is we'll say this next week, and then, um, uh, via this, you know, via the CEO. Um, so we don't need the twenty percent, um, yeah.
Oh, i- is that simply the elected council giving ideas?
No, elected council giving a statement.
That's what I see, council identify opportunities and examples, does that mean us?
No, no, what I what I'm saying is. Yes.
Sounds like.
No. It's actually counified, council identify opportunities and examples of how the efficiency challenge for organisation can be. Achieved, and the general mechanism on how staff can come back to council if unachievable by the CEO. So, council Ladbrook, that's just explaining what this challenge is about.
I think that last one, you mean it to come back through the CEO, not if unachievable by the CEO.
Yeah, yeah.
If come back, if unachievable, to come back through this, oh, no, it's worth.
Yeah, well, obviously, uh, we we give direction to the CEO, so we just don't want to, um.
So is that you telling me how the staff might, i- is it giving ideas?
Yeah, just as a general overview how it's got to work, so you can pass on to the staff, and I'd like to. If this happens, that we go around and explain to the staff, um, as elected officials, um, but, yeah. If, and it's through the CEO, so there's some bones around it rather than just, um, a figure that's happened and we know nothing about it. As employees.
Not through the CEO.
So if you really mean if the efficiency is unachievable, is that what you mean down the bottom? If, like, come back to council if the efficiency is unachievable. Yeah, we probably don't need through the CEO, we're just, because we're going to be actually passing it on to the CEO.
Well, that's the correct channel.
Yeah, true, yeah. But we probably don't need to say that, we're going to be, we're going to be giving it to the CEO as a motion.
Can we come back to the CEO if the efficiency is unachievable?
Mr Mayor, can I just clarify, you did say at a future council meeting?
So the the policy worked, the policy worked, because everyone's been under the pump, so that's three. But a statement of what council want would be four, and that would be in the next council. So we don't expect that the staff are doing any work on it.
So so next, next week, you'll come up with some ideas of where you think the sufficiencies might come from?
But also a structure, um, through a motion on how it's roughly going to work. So I believe we'll lay a lot of the fears of the staff in what we're expecting, right? And then we'll hear from you in time with other issues. So four, council identify opportunities and examples on how the efficiency challenge for the organisation can be achieved. And general, uh, mechanism on how staff can come back to council if the efficiency is unachievable.
Just put it the.
Sorry, a general mechanism there, and a, and a, sorry.
A a general.
Sorry, can be achieved. And a ge- and a general.
And and the gen- and the.
I think that bit of screen's going to be worn out in a minute.
Sorry, girl, yeah, and.
And the general mechanism on how can.
And the, yeah. Right, are you happy with that? I'll say it again, council identify opportunities and examples on how. The efficiency challenge for organisation can be achieved, and the general mechanism on how staff can come back to council. If the efficiency is unachievable. Um, and that can be, we don't say the next meeting, but we will, we can do it anyway, so. We can, we can put it on the agenda, if it happens. Okay, councillor O'Neill, can you see that motion, or have we sent it to you, or? Did you hear it?
No, I did hear it.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah, Kel Kel has sent it.
Okay, I didn't know whether we needed deputy CEO Rob's photography again.
Uh, did you want to read it first, councillor O'Neill?
I heard you read it out, thank you.
Okay, so, um, I'll speak for the motion. I believe this is, uh, crucial, um, as an efficiency initiative. Uh, which is going to strengthen council and allow us to deliver more for the community. Um, and, um, really excited about, um, working with the great people of Mariner Regional Council to. If this is adopted. Uh, do we have anyone wish to speak against the motion? Councillor Hancock?
I'd just like to say that I'm, uh, speaking against the motion, because I think this is irresponsible to do a blanket cut of twenty percent. Across the, um, across the functions, and I I think it's irresponsible, and so I won't be voting for it.
Okay, does anyone wish to speak for the motion? Well, I'll be, um, I'll be certainly voting for it, because I think it's a good way forward. Okay, does anyone want to speak against the motion? Does anyone else wish to speak? We're going to go to the vote, all those in favor? All those against?
Against.
Six, three, if I can call for a division. Uh, CEO, do we, I noticed we've got some more, but what do we need to get done tonight to?
That, the rating and the materials and services was the two biggest.
Right.
Things, um, the rest we can probably.
What about the projects, do we want to?
The draft budget, we haven't done, if there's any changes in that that we want to put forward.
Number is it? Or can you put that in the budget day to have some flexibility there, or not really, or do you need to nail it tonight?
Mr Mayor, can I ask, I obviously wasn't here for the last of the meeting, has the budget date been set, has it?
Uh, well, I I've asked for it to be next Wednesday, and we we've got legislative requirement to have it be done by the end of, um, July. So it's coming up fast, um. So I I think we need to, well, I was hoping, because all councillors were here next Wednesday, that we would do it. Um, first thing before the ordinary meeting next week, next Wednesday. Um, first thing before the ordinary meeting next week, next Wednesday.
We don't have to have it two weeks.
No.
No, okay.
No, we don't, so the idea is, I was hoping that we could get the documents out for. And, you know, like, everyone's seen all those budget, um. You know, documents, I would hope, as far as the, but it was more really to not. Obviously, the staff put a huge effort in, what do you, is there anything else that you need direction to be able to come up, or? Can we just have A, B or C in motions?
We're, we're not doing A, B, C motions anymore, Mr Mayor.
Just, um.
It's just going to be one.
Yeah.
So I've got concerns with some projects that I haven't had a chance to put forward. Just have concerns with some projects, like, they're enclosed.
If we don't do this now, do we do this before our ordinary meeting?
My, my con- my concern even with the ordinary meeting, anyway. Is whether that can even be achievable and explained, and whether it should be on a separate date. Because I sort of don't think it's right that we push it, A, I, I, A, I think we have a resolution. Saying what time we start our ordinary meetings, and B, um, I don't think we should push it back if we don't think we can get it done in five hours. I think it's not right to sit there until eight, nine o'clock at night and expect our staff to do that.
Um.
And I've, I've actually, um, penned a reply to this. I just wonder if there is another date, we could do it, where we could do that and then maybe adopt it in the afternoon.
Well, the question is, we, we really need to either stay tonight and do it, and if you want to. But I, I, I really think it needs to be next Wednesday, and I, I think there's ways where we can change the date for a meeting. If the council decide, and today was hopefully about making a, um. But setting the budget meeting date, which has to be decision by council, so I was just suggesting that.
Mayor, why can't, um, next Tuesday be the budget date?
Well, the, well, number one is, is everyone available? But number two, the, the main thing is that the staff have to do all the documents up, and it's a big effort. So they really need to know where they're going with that, so we can do it now if, um. It sounds like it's probably protests is the big thing.
I think so, yeah.
I would, no matter what day it is, I think we need to set a day to do. Project discussions and everything, and then have the. Actual budget meeting, is that?
That, that's where I'm thinking, councillor Mullen.
Just looking at the calendar, I mean, I'm, Tuesday's not a, I don't suppose, we don't have to have a week, what, what?
No.
I was looking at Friday, that was only my, I just.
But yeah, my, my preference is probably not for Friday, because it, it's leaving it too close to the wire, and if something goes wrong, we don't have anywhere to recover.
Maybe it's Thursday, oh, Tuesday, I mean, fine, Tuesday's fine, but it's a shorter period.
Could we? Uh, some, someone just suggested a morning, who was that morning? Morning and afternoon, like, if we had a morning session that we actually started the budget meeting. And we fine tuned from there, and we could adjourn to just do any fine tuning and then come back and. Continue the meeting. Uh, because then we would be actually in the budget meeting proper to finalize any. Um, bits and pieces.
I've had a few people ask me to make sure they find it, let them know, well, they'll know when the, we'll have an audience, so, um.
Yeah, that's right.
I, I think probably the morning could be just more of a working.
Yeah, and adopt the budget after.
Won't be the formal. For, for the newer councils, generally a budget meeting, you've been through one, but. Generally, it, it's sort of more ceremonial, you know, the actual moving and the seconding and adopting. Uh, it, it doesn't need to be that way completely, like, we could have, like, a working budget. Meeting to just make sure that everyone's comfortable or what they want to debate, and then we can. The, the, the biggest issue is, is having the, the rating sorted, and we've got clear. Instructions there, so we can get the revenue statement, the draft financials done, um, and. The associated.
What you're sugge- suggesting, we could come in, just say, I'll say Tuesday for a day. Nine o'clock Tuesday, but have the budget for two o'clock, so the.
Well, no, have the bu- start the budget meeting, but have the first part of it a working meeting, not ceremonial.
Let, let the people know that not to come at nine o'clock and then sit and go outside for two or three hours and then come back at whatever.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
You know.
So why don't we just have a.
So the budget meeting.
Still a guest on the tone, but it's still going to be a guest on the tone.
We could make it three o'clock in Tuesday afternoon.
Well, yeah, I mean, but yeah.
Do all this as well?
That's in the mo- that'd be in the, we could do that in the morning as well. We've got that Russell Cooper.
Because there's all those, it's all the draft operational stuff that we haven't passed yet.
Can we have an opportunity to see whether we're available or not?
I, I wonder, Mayor, should you, should you adjourn the meeting, so. We're not recording the, uh, diary management of each of us.
Well, we went on for.
Well, okay, I'll just adjourn the meeting for ten minutes and everyone can work out what they're doing. Okay, we'll keep going, um, I'd like to move that. Um, do we have to put it on the agenda? About the.
Budget meeting.
Budget meeting? I'll move that, uh, we put on the agenda to decide a date of the budget. Meeting, uh, the budget for the twenty-one, twenty-two Mariner Regional Council budget. So I've moved, we've got a seconder, councillor Burkitt, any opposition? All those in favour?
Yes.
That's nine zero, that's on the agenda, I would like to move that council sets. Two o'clock next Wednesday. Oh, here we are, um, that, um, council hold the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two budget meeting. On Wednesday, the twenty-eighth of July commencing at two P M. Do we have a seconder? Uh, yes, councillor Ladbrook, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak to it? We're going to go to the vote, all those in favour?
Yes.
Thank you, nine zero. Um, okay, well, I, um, we'll just adjourn the meeting till next Tuesday. At, uh, nine P M, A M. Oh, I suppose we'll move a, a little.
Yeah, A M.
Um, I, I don't think we, we can just adjourn, can't we? We don't have to do a motion.
To a following day and time, to a later day and time.
Yeah, so, well, I think, I think.
No, no motion, it's not a motion.
Yeah, righto, so I'd like to, we're going to adjourn this meeting until the twenty-seventh of July, twenty-twenty-one. At nine A M. Uh, to continue the special meeting. This special meeting, thank you for your attendance, councillors. All right, done.